Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Mary of Aquorum.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So is there any additional agenda items or motions to direct City Manager? All right, we'll go to Public Invited to Be Heard. First person is Sean Coleman, so please come down and state your name and address before you begin speaking.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Members of Council and City Staff, my name is Sean Coleman. I'm Director of Government Affairs for Terp and Care Station, our office address in Boulder's 5360, Boulder 80301. I'm just speaking to you this evening to give you a few words of encouragement as you go into this marijuana license study session, as one of the oldest licensees in Boulder County. We have quite a bit of experience with this policy area. I started working in the policy area in the service of Representative Jared Polis in DC, so I remember what it's like to first take this issue on. It's like reading through a water hose, but I assure you that you don't need a doctorate in the policy area, although it is fascinating in order to have an effective licensing program. What I invite you to do is, first of all, take some of the advice that your staff has given you, some of it's been very good, I've seen some of the recommendations already, and then really think towards the type of licensee that you want to have. This industry is not mature. Businesses such as ours are members of the Boulder Chamber, the Longmont Chamber, support organizations in the community like Out Boulder. I see some of colleagues in the audience here who are similarly involved in the community. So when you're thinking to things like zoning and all these things, take in mind that the businesses in order to be effective, engaged community members, need to also be viable. So really take those into consideration. We stand here to help you to the best of our ability to do this process. If you would, of course, you're welcome to our facilities, both City Staff and Councilmembers in Boulder, if you want to get a hands-on experience as you're thinking through this process, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Chenault.
How long do I have?
Three minutes.
That's a lot. My name is Tom Chenault, I live at 310 Pratt Street, and I know nothing about policy. I'm a 28-year-old, 28 years sober, daily AA guy, and I go to those meetings every day and I listen to people that are completely, completely worried about our youth and the people of Longmont and this marijuana epidemic that's going out there, and the opiates and all that jazz, and I just, I hope that we can look past all the policy and all that important stuff and that business stuff and look at Main Street for what it is. We've got a vibrant city going on here. If you go down to South Broadway in Denver, or you go to Boulder and you see all those stores and their signs, and you see the kids walking up and down the street wondering what that smell is, and the brownies and all the jazz going on. The marijuana is already legal, and that's a given, and we can't do anything about that, but we don't have to have these shops all over this town. And it might be big business, and I actually have been looking into that. I don't think we can afford to throw our kids down the drain like that. Now you look at these kids, and I was talking to somebody about, you know, the pot shops in Boulder, and this woman was telling me about her little 14-year-old son, who, she said, "Where are you getting this pot?", because she wanted to go grab the dealer and punch him in the face, and she said he can just walk in and he, they know which shops they can get the pot from. We don't need to do this to our kids. We don't need to do this to our community. It's bad enough out there. In this Angels Program that we're coming with in Longmont with Mike Butler and Jeff Sater, raising the bar and embracing the disease of alcoholism and drug addiction, we don't need to be sending another message called, "Let's just open up Main Street to all this garbage." So I'm against it, a lot of people are against it, and I pray that you guys will really, really look at the real, real expense of all this money we're going to get on the tax base from these shops. So thank you guys very, very much, it's good to see y'all.
Thank you. Jerry Shepard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and everybody else on Council. I'm Jerry Shepard. My office address is 710 11th Avenue, Suite 203D in Greeley. I'm an attorney, and I'm also on the Board for Colorado Normal. I appreciate the fact that you are looking at considering having retail shops for cannabis in your city. I think that that was something that will have a net benefit to your community. As you know, Colorado voters approved Amendment 64, and there are a lot of reasons behind that. And interestingly enough, the fact that we do have a regulatory framework will make it harder for people who are not of age to get cannabis when they're not supposed to have it. Obviously, there are exceptions for young people who use it in a medical way, and I have known people who have had family members who were underage who could access it. But having a regulatory framework, having the ability to check ID, and having a place where they actually have to go, and can be looked at, and I noticed that we have somebody from the State Agency here who does the marijuana enforcement, I think that would be helpful for the community. We've tried the drug war, it is not cost-effective, it is inhumane, it certainly created a boon for the private prison industry, but did nothing to keep people clean and sober, but did a lot to do control. I do recommend the book by Michelle Alexander, The New Jim Crow, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, but I would invite you all to consider this seriously. I would note that Garden City is next to where I live, and the mayor was interviewed on TV, and he said that they don't have problems with potholes because of the revenues generated. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Tony Woods.
My name is Tony Woods, 727 Main Street. I was the former owner of the Blueberry Twist, which was one of the dispensaries that was closed down in 2011, and the reason I'm standing here today is, whether, whatever your decision is, whether you're going to bring the shops back or not, I just wanted to state that if the decision was made to consider bringing shops back into Longmont, it's my opinion that the dispensary owners that were owners prior should possibly have first take on maybe a chance at being relicensed. I owned the store for about 18 months, I invested $100,000. Just as I seen it was starting to finally get me out of the red, so to speak, the city at that time decided to change the ordinance, and it really, it hurt, so to speak. So, you know, I'm not an advocate for or really against, I'm just a business person. My wife Jill, she does have a condition to where she uses the CBD oil stuff, and I know a lot of people are against it, and some are for, and, you know, that's not really why I'm here. I'm just a business owner. I believe that I went about running my business according to the law. I was given a sales tax license, and I ran it to the best of my ability. I wasn't happy with the decision that was made in 2011, but, you know, we went along with it, and that was that. But if you decide to reinstate, I believe that you ought to at least consider the former people that owned the licenses in the past have top priority in being able to license once again, and that's my take on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shannon Fender.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. My name is Shannon Fender. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Native Roots. We are one of the more established licensees here in the state of Colorado. We operate in eight jurisdictions, including Boulder County. We do have a store just right outside the city limits, as well as a couple in the city of Boulder. I'm mostly here tonight just to introduce myself to you. I do understand the desire of Council to consider opening up recreational in your city, and really, all that we're asking right now is that there be a stakeholder process where we can provide feedback before you make any decisions. We do have quite a lot of extensive experience in different jurisdictions, seeing what works, what does not work, and so we look forward to collaborating with you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Riggi.
Thanks, I don't have to, but thank you. That's very kind of, to have a seat for me, thank you. Hello, Mayor, and City Councilmembers. I have a little presentation that I typed up, and it's only partial, but I'd like to read it, and I'm going to try not to use up all my three minutes just reading it, but I'll read part of it. I wrote it today. From working with physically and mentally disabled persons for over 36 years as a speech therapist, experiencing being physically disabled now, and from what I have learned about the ADA or American Disabilities Act and human rights, more recently, which is a wealth of information, which I hope to pursue and research much more, I'd like to present this. Can you, is it too staticky? I'll try to stay back from the microphone. Safety issues, oh, I didn't get my name and address, I'm so sorry. Mary Ann Riggi from 7021st Avenue, Longmont, Colorado. Thank you, thanks for not reminding me, Mayor. Okay, safety issues for seniors and disabled people living in senior residences and riding on vans, buses, and taxi services for seniors are to be considered very important procedures and practices to follow for the safety and well-being of those who are disabled rodding these transportation systems. Based on my own concern for my own safety and the safety of other disabled persons, rodding these special systems designed for the seniors and disabled, safety is the main concern of van and bus drivers and taxi services, which I've observed and experienced, which service disabled as well as other passengers. Some of these companies exist in the Boulder County, Denver, Jeffco, and other northern parts of Colorado. I'm signed up for two of them, and I'm going to skip over some of this. I was informed of the importance and need for safety procedures to be followed when I first signed up for these systems. They are wonderful nonprofit or city and county-funded organizations which have been built, have been and still are funded to assist them in their travels from place to place. It's important to note that van and bus and special taxi drivers are responsible and trained in safety procedures and precautions, and are to be paid attention to by any disabled person or senior coming onto the vehicle, either up the steps or on a ramp or automated lift. This is from my experience and what I've observed, and it's very important, as I see it, and being as retired speech therapist, to, for the disabled person to be able to focus on the van driver and no one else, and passengers are not to, are to be, to be informed not to distract the disabled person, especially going up in an automated lift, and not to distract them from the van driver and the directions he's giving them for their safety. I think I'm almost done, right? That's the point I wanted to make. And so I've experienced this, and again, the van drivers are wonderful, and the bus drivers are good. So anyway, please note that I want to do more presentations about this issue, and maybe do a 10-minute presentation at some point if it's approved, but I think it's important that the passengers also know not to distract. The person who is already injured and could fall, especially those who are considered a fall risk, and not to distract the van driver. Thank you.
Thank you. Strider Binstone.
Howdy. I'm Strider Binstone, 951 West 17th Avenue. I appreciate hearing from Mary Ann. One time I got attacked by a bus driver when I was in rehab and could barely walk, and he started the bus like that, knowing that I had nothing to grab onto, intentionally trying to knock me down, but that's only a singular incident, but as far as the marijuana, I thought, there were like four shops in Longmont, or four are proposed. I thought it worked very well. I mean, even though the regulation wasn't very much in place at that time, I thought they operated very responsibly. I appreciate, you know, the idea of having limitations, but an absolute ban, I think, is not really viably workable. Anyway, I came to mention, we used to have a press in this town, maybe in the past there used to be several newspapers, now there seem to be none. Our Congressman, Ken Buck, actually showed up, first time in years. He actually dared to come into Longmont and, right over there at the library, and we had an exchange, and that was Sunday, there were 100 people there, and not a single word in the press. Very lively interchange. When I spoke with him, I particularly, well, I did mention our Ku Klux Klan in charge of the Justice Department, which I find very strange. But I spoke about climate change, and I only mentioned one thing. There are 6 million square miles of frozen tundra in the northern hemisphere, and even if it doesn't get any hotter, we're going to lose 1 and 1/2 million square miles. Look at the methane bomb that's coming from that. What are you going to do about it? He said he doesn't believe in climate change. The, one thing I wanted to mention, I thanked the City Council a couple of weeks ago for voting unanimously to support Mike Foot's bill in the legislature to give a thousand-foot setback from school property and hospitals. I find it tragic that our State Senate, the Republicans, voted in lockstep with the oil industry to prevent public support for our own health and safety, and we used to have dialogue in this country a few decades ago, even people with ideological positions were not absolutely lockstep. We have to bring that back again, and people vote on the basis of truth rather than on the basis of what somebody ordered them to. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. That ends everybody that's signed up for Public Invited to Be Heard. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? All right, I'm going to close Public Invited to Be Heard. Now it's time for our special reports and presentations. So we have a proclamation designating April 2017 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont. Kate Fedler is here to accept the proclamation. Actually, I have the name wrong, so I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating the month of April 2017 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas April 2017 marks the 49th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, which affirms the right of every citizen to obtain housing of their choice regardless of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, disability, or family status, and whereas state of Colorado law also affirms the right of every citizen to obtain housing of their choice regardless of race, color, creed, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national origin, disability, marital status, or family status, and whereas these laws prohibit discrimination and harassment of all aspects of housing, including sales and rentals, eviction terms and conditions, mortgage loans, insurance, land use and zoning, and are all a vital part of ensuring Longmont is a welcoming and inclusive community where everyone can belong, and whereas we recognize the importance of fair housing, education, and the City Council's efforts to further fair housing for all. Now therefore, I Dennis Alcoms, Mayor, with the virtue of authority vested to me in the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont.
If I may, Mayor Coombs, Council. My name is Susan Spalding. Myself and Adriana Pareja are the Community Relations Specialists in the Office of Community and Neighborhood Resources for the City of Longmont. Longmont has a long, clear, strong commitment to the ideal of fair housing, which is equal opportunity for all. In 2005, the city government made that commitment specific and tangible by starting a fair housing program within the Office of Community and Neighborhood Resources. Under this program, the city affirmatively offers education to employees and community members, training to landlords and tenants, and works with the Colorado Civil Rights Commission to take complaints and provide assistance with fair housing issues such as predatory lending and housing discrimination. Community and Neighborhood Resources, collaborating with the CDBG Office and Longmont Housing Authority, continues to provide fair housing and equal opportunity programs, guidance, and referrals for tenants, landlords, realtors, and community members who have fair housing concerns, questions, and complaints. Since 2011, in order to further the professionalism of Longmont's landlords, Community and Neighborhood Resources, together with Sarah Arney and David Kennedy, with with Longmont's Police Crime-Free Housing Program, has sponsored the monthly landlord, Longmont Landlord Training Alliance. This program provides information to landlords with the goal of creating less conflict and more informed engagement with the ideals of fair housing, that is equality for all, equality of opportunity for all persons, thus laying the foundation for and building Longmont's community of rich diversity. Equal access to rental housing and homeownership opportunities is the cornerstone of federal housing policy and the cornerstone of Longmont's fair housing commitment. This proclamation is a small acknowledgement of Longmont's uncompromising promise that no one in Longmont will be denied access to housing because of their race, religion, color, national origin, sex, familial status, disability, ancestry, creed, belief system, marital status, or sexual orientation.
Thank you so much. to update council with their quarterly report.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and Councilmembers. Thank you for your time this evening. As the mayor stated, I am here to provide you with the quarterly economic development update from the Longmont Economic Development Partnership. I'll start by reminding you, as always, that the Economic Development Partnership focuses our services in four core service areas, including advanced Longmont, advanced primary industry, advanced local business, and advanced startup community. Some of the milestones of the first quarter of two thousand and seventeen that we've achieved relative to the advanced Longmont Economic Development Strategy, including the hosting of our first-ever Economic Development Summit, Advanced Longmont Economic Development Summit, where we worked with our board, members of City Council, our advanced Longmont partners, and some of our investors to develop some strategic initiatives for economic development for the community, which we'll hopefully be sharing with you in the next couple of months. We also worked very closely with you all and with city staff to update the economic development incentive code to make us more competitive with other communities, as well as align better with our state and county-level partners. We have taken over management of the Longmont Ignite Entrepreneurial Fund, now with a formalized collaboration to administer that fund with the Community Foundation and the Tinker Mill. We hosted Longmont Innovation Week, which featured a week full of activities related to highlighting the innovative assets in the City of Longmont, including the Innovation Center, Tinker Mill, and a couple of our innovative startup businesses in the community. We also joined you all for your City Council retreat in hopes of aligning our economic development strategy and goals with those of the City Council. And Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Santos were able to join us for the Metro Denver EDC Annual Luncheon, where we celebrated AstraZeneca's recognition as Project of the Year in the region for their investments in Boulder County, including their acquisition of the former Amgem campus here in Longmont. We hosted a Primary Employer Executive Roundtable with Dr. Paul Grundy to help engage our primary industry businesses in the conversation about how we might have some influence over healthcare affordability and accessibility here locally, and as always, we have ongoing collaborative efforts with all of our advanced Longmont partners. Our map is a little clearer than it was at the end of last year, keeping in mind that we're just a quarter into the year. We have made outbound marketing trips to Minneapolis, where I was able to visit about a half a dozen different site selectors, actually came back with two active prospects for potential relocation or expansion into Colorado and specifically into Longmont. I also participated in a Startup Champions Network Summit in Tampa, Florida. Startup Champions Network is a group of about a hundred different individuals from across the country who are all engaged in activities promoting startup ecosystem building across the country. So it was really idea sharing, and we got a lot of really good ideas for Longmont Startup Week that we'll be hosting here in July of this year. We continue to focus our efforts on inbound visits and inbound marketing activities. We find the most effective way to attract people to Longmont is to get them here to see what's going on in our community for themselves. And so we've had five different prospects visit our community just in the first quarter, as well as, I mentioned, the Innovation Tour and Mayor's Summit that were part of that. The Mayor's Summit was hosted by Mayor Coombs and had attendance from a dozen different communities, leadership of a dozen different communities across the northern Colorado region, having a conversation about how we can work together regionally to support startups and entrepreneurs across the region. We also continue to participate in the planning and hosting of the monthly new tech events, as well as participated in the Chamber's Unity in the Community and Leadership Longmont, sharing the story of the advanced Longmont strategy internal within our community. We continue to have a lot of success and a lot of growth with our digital marketing efforts, our e-marketing campaigns. Typical nonprofit open rate for newsletters and other marketing campaigns for nonprofit organizations is right around between twenty and twenty-three percent, and we consistently have in excess of twenty-five percent, and you can see up to thirty-five percent open rate on our digital marketing campaigns. We've programmed all of our events for the year, so just wanted to give you a heads-up, maybe you can add to your calendars, some of the events that we have coming up. Tomorrow, we'll be hosting the Commercial Brokers of Longmont Network Group. Later this month, and going into May, we have several activities going on for National Small Business Week here in Longmont. Longmont Startup Week, I mentioned, is July twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth of this year, and then we have our Community Impact and Real Estate Showcase events, which are two of our bigger events later in the year. We continue, as I mentioned, to see progress with our digital marketing efforts, including on the social media platforms that we typically use, Twitter and Facebook. We continue to see consistent growth in, on both of those platforms on a monthly basis, and certainly over the course of the last couple of years. Our reach with both of those platforms is now global, specifically on Facebook. Over, over half of our Facebook likes are from people outside of Longmont. So when you're talking about economic development, the idea is to tell the story to the rest of the world about what the opportunities are here in Longmont. And so when you have more than half of your followers coming from outside of Longmont, that's a good thing for economic development. You'll recognize, maybe recognize, these numbers from the last time I was here. I left this slide in here to remind myself, to tell you, that we have actually acquired a different data source than what we had been using over the past year. It was much more affordable, user-friendly, and equally as accurate as what we've been using in the past. The one trade-off is that it does lag a quarter. So going forward, when we report job creation numbers, we'll be lagging a quarter. So these are still the Q4 2016 numbers. When I'm back again in three months, we'll be able to report the Q4 job creation numbers. And so the work of the Economic Development Partnership as it relates to primary industry, we had five hundred new jobs announced by one company. Of course, we all know that was the announcement of Smucker's investment in our community in February. We float right around a three percent unemployment rate, depending on the source, and looking at seasonally adjusted versus not seasonally adjusted, projection versus actual, but we've floated right around a three percent unemployment rate over the last year. We know twenty, twenty-four new jobs pending announcement by a company that has told us that they're coming to Longmont but are not ready to announce publicly, and the pipeline of prospects that we're working with have the potential to add an additional seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight jobs. Close to eighty thousand square feet of commercial space has been absorbed, dropping our commercial real estate vacancy rate to nine-point-six percent. A year ago, I was reporting a twenty percent commercial vacancy rate. And so in our pipeline right now, we have twenty-eight active prospects for expansion or relocation into the community, with fourteen of those, thirteen or fourteen of those having come in new in the first quarter of this year, the remainder are carryover projects from last year, and in some cases even longer that we've been working with them. Their local business support services, we have hosted in partnership with the SBDC and the Longmont Library, five different workshops, attended by a total of eighty-one business owners and operators in the community. We also continue to manage the partnership with the SBDC and have, so far this year, provided a hundred and fifty hours of one-on-one mentoring and counseling with fifty different individuals and companies within the community. I have one small business lending, or small business lending loan for six hundred dollars. If you have a chance to connect Janine sometime, you'll want to ask her that story. It's a pretty uplifting story of supporting someone out of a, a bad situation into entrepreneurship and getting ahead in life. And then we have awarded one of the John Schallert Scholars, Destination Boot Camp scholarships that we have available to Georgia boys. We've met with ten different local businesses to offer them support and connect them with the resources that we have available through our organization, as well as our partner organizations, and this shows a breakdown of the types of, of local businesses that we've been meeting with and having conversations with. Am I cutting me off? I think, oh, okay. I was gonna say, I could. And then finally, our advanced startup community efforts. We continue to work with both new startups in the community, as well as entrepreneurs that are considering starting new businesses in the community. In the first quarter, met with twenty different, either startups or potential startups, again to connect them with the resources that are available to them to do so here in Longmont. And I've mentioned that we are well into planning Longmont Startup Week for two thousand and seventeen, which will be July twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth of this year. We've so far raised about half of what our goal is for cash sponsorships for Startup Week, with about three months left to go before we get to the actual Startup Week, and we've had some very generous in-kind sponsorships. One I would like to point out is our very own Circle Graphics has agreed to do all of the large-scale printing for Startup Week, which is a significant cost savings for us, so want to give them some recognition for doing that. We're planning seventy-two different sessions throughout the week. I shouldn't say we, we and a lot of volunteers and partners that we're working with, we're certainly not planning all seventy-two sessions, but we think that we're gonna have a pretty dynamic and exciting Startup Week. We have some new and interesting events and some more interactive kind of things than what we've seen with Longmont Startup Week in the past, so we're excited to help Longmont Startup Week grow and continue to prosper year over year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Looks like you're doing a great job to me.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, your study session item tonight is a discussion on Longmont's marijuana ban, if you're ready, and Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager, is gonna lead off.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. As we're getting the PowerPoint launched here, just wanted to give some introductory comments. First of all, just to recognize some folks who have worked, I know we've done this in the past, starting with Erin Fozick, who's really done a yeoman's work with the staff report that you see and tonight's presentation. We also have some other members of the committee here tonight, Michelle Goldman. We also have Sarah Arnie, Sean Harper, did we have another? I think that's what's here, who is here tonight, but we also have representatives from the City Attorney's Office, the Sales Tax Office, and some other folks, so appreciate their hard work. You may recall that, you may recall that in two thousand and thirteen, just by way of background, the Longmont City Council did adopt a ban on the licensing and permitting of all retail or any kind of, excuse me, medical or retail establishments related to marijuana. That also was preceded by a two thousand and eleven ban on medical establishments, which of course that law had passed earlier until Longmont voted to ban then. So as far as some previous direction that you all have given us, we wanted to just start by saying, we were going on the assumption tonight that the mayor's motion, initial motion from several weeks ago about four establishments, that's really what we looked at as far as the number, and so we didn't put that in the presentation, certainly, like all of these items, you know, we, we are working in your direction, we can have a discussion about these as well. We also went on the assumption of what a majority of council told us, actually in two thousand and sixteen, when we were talking about medical versus recreational, and the fact that because of some of the challenges of medical marijuana, that staff was recommending that we simply do recreational. At that time, a majority of council members said that that's the direction they wanted to go. I certainly want to point out that Councilmember Christensen has not supported doing rec-only and has wanted to add medical, but we were, again, just working on the, the majority. That also can be up for discussion if you so choose. And then last but not least, the customer satisfaction survey. We had two different opportunities for folks to weigh in on this. One was the citywide survey that was conducted. We had about nine hundred people, well, eight hundred and six, actually, folks that responded to that survey, and the results of that were pretty split. We had, when you added the strongly support and support, you had about fifty-six percent in support. When you added the opposed and strongly opposed, you had about forty-four percent that opposed. Another data point that we've gathered since you, you directed us to, get you some information on this, was a survey of downtown business and property owners and tenants, and so working with the LDDA, we did conduct a survey, and we had ninety-three respondents to that, so a pretty good response rate. Again, adding the opposed and strongly opposed, you actually had fifty-five percent, so there, it was the majority on opposed, new recreational establishments in downtown, and forty-five percent did support, again, adding the strongly support and support, you had about forty-five. So kind of reverse results on the surveys that we did, but obviously that second one is only for the downtown area. So tonight, as Erin kicks us off, what she's gonna be leading us through is really a discussion on location considerations, also licensing, how these might be licensed and how we would give out license, should we choose to move forward, and then revenue considerations, should there be an additional tax, is that something that the council wants to see with that? And then last but not least, just the public improvement process of how we go about additional conversations with city, with citizens, rather, with, whether that be, you know, community meetings, or stakeholder meetings, or additional surveying. So with that, I'll turn it over to Erin Fozick.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. I'm Erin Fozick with the Planning and Development Services Department. Sean provided a good overview of what we're hoping to chat with you about tonight, so I just wanted to kind of go through each of the four topic areas and get some specific questions that staff had and, and items that we're hoping to get direction from council on tonight. And as Sean mentioned, certainly, some of the assumptions that we have already as kind of givens, if you want to talk about those, we can do that as well. So we have a number of questions in the council communication, and those are paraphrased here. I think we'll just kind of take one by one, and if, if it's okay with council, maybe get direction on these things as we go, or if you'd prefer, we can wait till the end, but my fear is that things will get lost if we do that. So if you're okay with it, we'll just kind of take the locational questions first and then move on from there. So some of the things that we think about, and certainly, I think those of us in, in planning and code enforcement, and others in particular, are some of the locational considerations, and so we're interested, and I'll say, for, for most all of these questions, they're asked, as if we lift the ban and limit a number of establishments within the city, would we, how would we determine locational requirements? And so we've provided some information on, we've talked about this in the past, how some communities do it. In the past, we've talked with council about, should we require geographic dispersment, or should we, and this is kind of staff's preferred option, really just let the market, land use, and zoning dictate where businesses could locate, rather than requiring them to be in certain, for example, wards or quadrants of the city? So those are some different options. So how would we determine where these businesses could be located? One way, and again, this is kind of what staff would look at, is by zoning district. Currently, retail sales are allowed in commercial, regional commercial, the central business district, as well as in some more limited form in some of our industrial districts. Would this be appropriate for looking at retail marijuana establishments? Is there something else we'd want to look at? The question of downtown, Sean mentioned, we did survey downtown business and property owners. There was a small majority that did not think these businesses, or at least four, four marijuana businesses should be located downtown. district, as well as in some more limited form in some of our industrial districts. Would this be appropriate for looking at retail marijuana establishments? Is there something else we'd want to look at? The question of downtown, Sean mentioned, we did survey downtown business and property owners. There was a small majority that did not think these businesses, or at least four marijuana businesses, should be located downtown, so how does that factor in? And then finally, are there specific locations in the community that you feel would not be appropriate, and if so, what might those be?
Okay, do you want to just go through this one at a time?
And we'll be taking notes, Mayor Coombs, and as you give.
Well, I guess my thoughts are, I don't think you should try to, I like market forces and zoning, that's my personal preference, versus trying to say, we need one here, one Councilmember Christensen.
I'm not sure how market forces would play out for a place that hasn't existed yet, but I would rather see them dispersed, but that will have to be decided based on zoning and land use. I would like that to take preference and also try to get them dispersed, but no more than to an award. And, yeah, so that's all we're talking about with that one. But I do think that the whole point of this is that they, this is something that the city of Longmont voted for, this is something the state voted for, and we do not want them all clumped together. And I don't think, actually, that any of us envisioned Longmont Downtown development, you know, the area of Longmont Downtown Development to be used for this, to have any of these stores there, because that would really, it's the opposite of what we're trying to do with downtown. And it's a different kind of, it's the kind of place you go, park your car, go in and leave. It's not, we, downtown is a place we want people to walk up and down and linger, and so I would like to see it not be in downtown at all. And I would like that to extend really all the way down to where we're, to First Avenue, where we're trying to, you know, have the, trying to extend the downtown development to, you know, with the new turkey plant.
So including like South Main Station and the transit station?
Yes, right, because, yeah, that would just take up, what we're trying to do is extend the viability of downtown and the liveliness of it, so.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would agree that I wouldn't want it in the DDA district. I think perhaps we should look at zoning like we do for liquor stores, use the same criteria that we do for liquor stores, like not right next to a school, that kind of thing. And I think counting on the market is a good thing, but I also agree that we don't want them all in one place. So I think perhaps planning and zoning could decide where they go. That would be my opinion.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Refresh my memory, did we take a vote to lift the ban?
No.
Should we do that before we would decide where we're gonna put these? If the ban doesn't pass, then there's no point in talking about this.
Well, this is just to bring an ordinance, I mean, basically, the ordinance is the time that we're going to vote on whether we're gonna lift the ban. This is to help develop the ordinance.
Okay.
So this is the first step.
So, then I'll ask my question. So Erin, can you tell me what your definition of market is, when you say let the market decide? What do you specifically mean by that?
Really, what we're referring to with that first bullet is, if someone can find an appropriate location that is zoned, a landlord will permit it, or they own the building, it meets the state requirements, it meets other city requirements, whatever those may be, that that would be allowed, rather than us dictating, you know, in Ward One, oh, sorry, someone already had that, so even though you found a storefront that would work, you can't do it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to second or third what Councilman Christian Finley said about keeping it out of the LDDA zoning, and I agree, we should have the land use and zoning decide.
So I guess my question to staff is, let's say we're gonna control it by zoning, what zoning do you use that keeps it out of the central DDA area but lets it go other places, you know, further down on Main Street? I mean, is there?
Mayor Coombs, we have a specific zoning district that's central business district. It doesn't cover the entire DDA, but it essentially covers all of the non-residential areas. So, we would likely need to look at that and make sure that what the intent was, was also able to be accomplished through the code, but we do have a specific zoning district that roughly straddles Main Street and goes a few blocks on either side.
Okay, all right.
And so, depending on, you know, the direction that we get, and assuming that the ban is lifted, we could look at commercial zones, regional commercial zones, potentially some of the industrial zones. Obviously, I don't think anyone's talking about allowing us in residential zones. We don't allow, generally, we don't allow businesses in residential zones anyway, but that's not anything that we've heard would be consistent with your direction.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think I'm in agreement too with just keeping out of the central business district zoning, as well as considering where schools are located, just same like liquor stores, like Councilmember Finley said, because I also think that where these are gonna probably work out the best are gonna be in areas that are more industrial or, I guess industrial's the right word. I guess I've also seen them on busy city streets. I know that Breckenridge, I think they moved them off of Main Street, and so I think that that's another reason to not allow them on Main Street, on their, in their business district, anyway. And I think the market will kind of dictate how many we actually get and where they're gonna be, so, but we, limited to four is probably a good number.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I heard you say not allow in the DDA, but then I also heard you say not allow on Main Street. And so the DDA, you know, ends depending on if you're looking at the specific boundary of the LDDA, or if you're looking at, for example, envision Longmont land use around Long's Peak Avenue, maybe even Ninth Avenue, would you, are you suggesting that these should not be allowed anywhere along Main Street?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Because I think that's where a lot of the commercial property is, so.
Just wanted to clarify.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Golly, I love council sometimes. This is a fun topic. I had an idea, and I was just gonna toss it out, since this is the topic we're talking about. I already shared it with the mayor and Councilmember Moore as we were starting our meeting, and they made snide comments, but anyway, here is my idea, okay? And I see the writing on the wall, okay, as I'm counting votes. Me personally, I'm not against pot, I'm not against, I'm not telling anyone they can't smoke pot, recreational or medicinal. I've always, my political stance is maintain the status quo, you know, meaning maintain the status quo, at least on a local level. So my question is, what are we trying to accomplish, right? I think that you've got part of our city that's adamantly opposed to pot, and they'd say, no, we don't want it in our town, and then we also saw that we have a slightly bigger section of our city who are adamantly saying, hey, you know, we want it here. And I think that the reasons are, you know, on one hand, they don't want it because they're scared of, as we've heard from Mr. Chenault, that we're scared about the message that we're sending to our kids. I think it's, it's, I mean, even just the fact that we're talking about how it would impact downtown, the same arguments could be made to any area where one owns property. I think it'd be hard-pressed to find a, anyone other than the person who's renting them the space that they'd want a pot store next to them. So I think that the very arguments are somewhat ironic that we're saying, we don't want it downtown, but, yeah, let's put it somewhere else where somebody else owns property. So I think that there's concerns, health concerns, property value concerns from those who are opposed to legalizing it in town. But on the other hand, I also think there are people who make valid arguments about medicinal use. I think that there's, I've heard my fellow council members say that, you know, the revenue could, you know, help us out as a city. I've also, I also think that there's a general ideological argument, which is, are you for or against pot? And if you're for pot use, then it should be allowed in Longmont. So here's my proposed solution, okay? Right now, we have three, essentially, three locations in town. We've got the one on North Main, we've got the one on Sunset, and we have the new one going in on East 119, the one that I recused myself from, and you guys voted to bring in the water.
That's a commercial, that's not, totally different thing.
No, I'm telling you right now that that's what they're planning on doing. So it's the exact same thing. But so why not, say the locations are already where they're located, and they're all willing to annex into the city, is my understanding? So why not grant them the permits, and you get, everybody wins, meaning we get the revenue, people can say, hey, we opened up Longmont to pot, but those who are against it, we're not opening it up any more than we already are. And so that is what I would, you know, argue for, which is, if we're gonna do it, it's just another way to maintain the status quo, but get the political upswing as well as the revenue upswing and live our lives in harmony.
I think we should go through this process, and that's something we should discuss once the ordinance is written, whether we're gonna be for or against.
We're talking location, specifically, now is the time to bring it up.
Okay. All right, go ahead. Councilmember Christensen.
Well, I see what Councilman Bagley is saying. We're a town, Longmont is a town, one family of ninety-two thousand people, and we, just like with any family, we have lots of different ideas and behaviors. We have the obnoxious uncle, we have the drunken aunt, we have, you know, all these people that we, and, you know, we, there's a difference between what we personally do and what we don't mind other people doing or what we tolerate other people doing. But we have to set policy as a town, and that's what we have city council for presumably. And we have to balance the rights of these, the city, the state and the city both voted to support this, support legalizing marijuana, and we have to treat these businesses as if they really are businesses with certain rights, and the people who are objecting to marijuana have their rights, but the people who want marijuana also have rights. So I think that's what we're trying to do here, and, yeah, I just, I think we should go on trying to, you know, it's not like this is new. Marijuana, I know, has been in Longmont for at least sixty years, and we're, the people who like it are not gonna use anymore, and the people who don't like it are not gonna start using it, and I think we should try to have it in different locations. This allows it to be in small shopping centers, things like that. I mean, there aren't just three locations, but I would like to see it dispersed so that it's easier for people to access if they want, but not in our central business district, as we discussed.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, like Councilmember Bagley, I see the writing on the wall, I was one of the last, I'm the last council member who voted to ban medicinal and recreational shops in Longmont. You know, the residents of Longmont and the state voted to legalize marijuana, and I understand that, but there's also the, a conflict between federal law and state law, and I've said this many times, I'm just not gonna repeat myself. But it also, that amendment to the state constitutional also allowed cities to opt out, and I think that was the right thing to do. I don't see the big dollar amounts. We've seen staff bringing back numbers before about what this might bring into the city. I just don't see it, but the way this is looking, it's coming. So in that case, then, yeah, I don't want to see it in the DDA area. It needs to stick in, needs to be stuck in commercial and industrial areas, thousand feet away from schools and churches. If I remember, and Eugene, you might want to refresh my memory, and I'm sure staff has seen this, some of the preliminary ordinances that we did back in 2012, thirteen, if we were going to allow this, we did, there was some zoning discussions at that time, so it might be good for, if staff hasn't seen that, perhaps to go back and look at those to see what we looked at at that time, and see if that's applicable to now. Other than that, you know, it's, no one is saying that you can't have marijuana, cannabis. What you do in your house is what you do in your house. I'm not looking in, but when it starts affecting, when it starts to affect other people, and just want to, I kind of draw the line, plus, again, it's that age-old issue, federal and state.
I'm gonna lean in just real quickly here, and then I'll ask Jonah to speak. You know, I think when we are elected to represent the people, and if the majority of the people, the city of Longmont, voted to legalize marijuana, and then we did the survey, and fifty-five percent said they were more for it than against it, and forty-four percent was against it, forty-four, forty-five percent. So there's two data points, they both were saying the same thing, and I think our job, whether you want it or don't want it, is do what the majority of the citizens are telling us to do, and so sometimes, you know, I voted against my interests because I felt the constituents wanted certain things, and I think that's the job of elected officials, is to represent our constituents, and I think that's why, you know, I'm kind of for, but I'd agree now, hearing the arguments that maybe it shouldn't be in the DDA downtown area, and we can control it by zoning, so that's my thoughts. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Councilman Bagley, I agree with you, that's a good idea, but we still need to go through this process in case those stores that are already there want to relocate, or, so, I think this is a good process.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. To your point, we can look back on history and see when voters, residents wanted something, even in the most recent Longmont history, that didn't, may not have been the best idea. And residents also, and voters, vote for us to try to make the best decisions possible, and sometimes that means saving voters from themselves. It's a difficult situation, and just because a majority of people vote for something, I mean, I, looking back at the fifties and sixties, and of people voting for, you know, you had to have a certain ID to vote, you know, the vast majority of voters voted for having that in a certain state. Was it right? I don't think so.
Okay, I guess we're now ready for the next slide.
Actually, Mayor Coombs, if we can, just for staff to maybe tell you what we heard, and then a couple of outstanding, but you're right, I think we're almost a quarter done of the questions that we have for you. The unanimous consensus that we heard was not in the DDA, let zoning dictate the locations in commercial and industrial areas. The two things that we only heard, two, and then in one case, three, council members speak on are the number, maybe limiting a number of per ward, so Councilmembers Finley and Christensen both said, limit the number per ward, maybe two, I think was thrown out, and then the other one that we heard was, make these regs the same as liquor stores as far as the separation from schools. So I only heard three people, but is that, most people would say, make it the same as liquor stores in terms of that separation?
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. Just for clarification, you did put in the council communication that liquor stores, it's a five hundred, five hundred dollar, five hundred foot from a school, setback? Is that right, five hundred?
Councilmember Peck, the state has a separation of five hundred feet, local licensing authorities can modify that, and we have chosen to modify that, but that is consistent with state law.
Why did I hear that it was a thousand feet?
I'm not sure. Some jurisdictions have different separation requirements for medical marijuana, retail marijuana establishments, maybe that might have been referenced at some point, but currently, the state law around liquor licensing is a five hundred foot separation from K-12 establishments. The city does not have that. We've. We've, we've modified that, but if we wanted to be consistent with state law, that would certainly be something we could look at.
Okay.
Well, one question, doesn't the state, in their regulations, already have, for marijuana regulations, do they have a, they don't have a regulation?
They no longer have state-specific requirements at the state level, but many jurisdictions have their own separation requirements.
So cities can go more stringent than states, but we can't conflict with state regs?
We could establish a separation requirement that we wanted, the state would not dictate what that needed to be for marijuana.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
I also think it would be a good idea to add into certain kinds of locations that are inappropriate. Churches, and daycare centers, and, and places where addicts are being treated, so.
Many jurisdictions include recovery centers. You know, daycares could be a little bit challenging, depending on what the definition is. There's, I mean, obviously, many home daycares are in residential areas, that may not be a conflict.
Well, we have to be careful, if you start putting in everything, then pretty soon, there's no places, then you pretty much ban them, I mean.
Mayor Coombs, do we, maybe by nodding, do we have consensus as far as adding additional restriction locations, such as those just proposed, or not?
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is related to these comments, but I guess what I'd, if we're gonna do this, I would like to see a municipal ordinance that makes it, I, I don't think that people go into pot shops, like liquor stores, who are underage, maybe they have fake IDs, but I think most of this happens when you have someone over the age of 21, go in, buy it from the store, and then distribute it. At least, that's what I'm seeing with my clients. So I guess I would, if we're gonna do this, we should probably make, I would prefer to see a hefty penalty, criminal municipal penalty, for those who are distributing marijuana to people under the age of 21. And that, I don't think we have the, I don't think we can set policy for the judge, but as a city, I think that we should send a message, if we're gonna do this, that kids have no business having this stuff.
Absolutely. But back to his first question.
No, no, I think that comment is consistent with the lack of head nods, that, let's start with the ordinance being just the separation that we have for liquor licenses now, from schools. And then, I did see some people nodding on recovery centers as well, though. So, so it looks like we've got consensus?
Daycares?
Churches?
There's a lot of daycares.
I guess I don't understand the logic of daycares, I mean, do you think these kids from the daycare centers are going to the?
Well.
I mean, I, okay.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Again, it might be helpful if we have some of the data that we previously worked on from several years ago. If I'm not mistaken, I think this is where the 1,000 feet came in, Councilmember Peck, was that we discussed 1,000 feet from schools, churches at that time. I, my memory may be a little vague.
We definitely included schools, and we did different analysis with, I believe, 500 and 1,000, and we could certainly resurrect that.
Right, but it, yeah, it might be good just to, a little bit more of that information.
I think schools are relatively easy. We know, we know where public schools are located. Daycares can, can change, it may be a little bit more challenging for us to always know exactly where all of those are, but certainly, we could add that.
Well, there's daycare centers everywhere, I mean.
Well, yeah.
Do their kids go to school?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Christensen?
Well, yeah, you have a good point about daycares. The three-year-olds are not gonna be trotting over there. But how, what, I think we should just follow the same sort of specifications we do for alcohol, because it's, it's similar enough that we want to have sort of consistent protections and regulations.
Mayor Coombs, I think staff has the direction we need on this particular topic. So, well, a few more topics. So the next one is licensing considerations.
So one of the things we've talked about, if we limit the number of establishments within the city, assuming the ban is lifted, what type of process would we use to license these establishments? We gave a couple of examples of what other jurisdictions have done. For example, Adams County had a hard limit of 10, and that was for all types of businesses, including cultivation, manufacturing, testing, so, you know, essentially, three of each kind, I think, is what they did. Staff from that jurisdiction has indicated that was a very time-consuming process, they had over 1,600 applications for that. So I, I think we would not encourage us to have that type of free-for-all system. We've looked at maybe using an RFP process, and wanted to float that by council, where we could establish guidelines that people would, you know, working with our purchasing department, have people submit requests for proposals. Or is there another type of process that council would like to see used? For example, a lottery, an auction of licenses, again, we could use the first-come, first-served, we could look at existing businesses in, you know, a certain area. So there's a number of things, and we wanted council to weigh in on, on some of those considerations.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Mr. Woods spoke earlier about having to close down when the ban came in. Are we going to consider having people in that same situation have a first-come, first-served type of, have we thought about that? I didn't even think about it until he spoke.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, we, we did have seven medical marijuana dispensaries that were operating in Longmont prior to our ban, and so that's not really something that we've talked about, but that's certainly something we could consider. I don't know that we've had a lot of outreach with those businesses, but I guess that's something we could consider.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, one of the things, if we did do the RFP process that staff is recommending, we could make that a point system, and for instance, like our purchasing, our current purchasing policy says, if you're a local bidder, you get preference, you get a, I think it's a five-point, or some sort of preference. We could do the same thing for those seven businesses, if that's what council wanted us to see. So what we're proposing is just a set of criteria, as far as your location, what you're planning to do with the store, you know, a number of criteria, and one of those could potentially be, were you a previous owner in Longmont?
Okay. I would, I would advise doing that, letting the other owner, the previous owners have some kind of a scoring that, that gives them more points.
So I wanna clarify something as we talk about this. One of the things that Sean started out at the beginning was saying, you know, we took the motion that was made by the, the mayor at the last council meeting, where we said four establishments. So I think there's a piece on the number that may need to be resolved, in that if, if four is not the number you are, you all are looking at, then I think we need to know that. Again, we were starting with four, based on what we'd seen in previous council meeting. So is four the number, or?
I think four is the number. But, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, under the Bagley plan, there would, there would be three. I, I think that if there are going to be more than three, perhaps, companies that already operate in Boulder County should be given preference, and I think we should, we should mirror the other cities and county in regulation, because those people have a track record that we can look at in Boulder County, in our area. We can see if they're good players, in good businesses, if they operate well in our area. I, you know, I didn't know that we had any pot stores that were closed. I'd like to learn more about where they were, and who, who operated them, because I don't know. I would need some background to give them extra points, I don't mind giving them extra points, perhaps, but I don't know who they were, or where they operated, so I don't know what kind of players in that business they were.
Doesn't the annexation process take a long, long time? I mean, 'cause I wasn't considering these three as even part of the four.
Mayor Coombs, annexation is a discretionary act by council, so the first step in the process would be for someone to come to you all for referral. If they were referred through the process, then we could start the actual application process. And there's a number of steps that someone would need to go through, you know, holding a neighborhood meeting, going through the development review committee process, going to planning commission for hearings, and then coming ultimately to city council for a hearing. So, I mean, it is a major development application with associated process with it. There's also additional considerations in terms of infrastructure and utilities, and some associated costs with that, that we would definitely wanna talk with any potential applicants about.
Another thing that was mentioned by Shannon was having a stakeholder process, and I think that's a good idea. I think included in that stakeholder process should be those three stores, and perhaps owners of previous stores, and others who operate in the county that might want to come here. And through that stakeholder process, some of the stuff, I think, could be worked out.
Councilmember Christensen?
I, I do believe that we need to preference the businesses who are already here, the two businesses, should they decide they want to move, and I've heard that one of them at least would like to move into the city. I think they should be given preference, because they've already been here, they both, they have good records, and we know their records. And I also think that the businesses that we put out of business should also be prefaced. And I, if there are too many to make it four, then I think it should be a lottery, because that's the fair way to do it, you know, I think. But I don't, we have to, this is why we need to discuss whether we're going to allow recreational and medical, because both of the businesses that are here serve medical and marijuana. They also only serve people 21 and older. And I am not interested in us continuing to put, you know, tell people how to do their own business. They're very committed, both of them, to medical marijuana. And to me, that's, that is the issue of having, discriminating against medical marijuana. A lot of things have happened since the, since we talked about this first. The state has cleaned up a whole lot of its marijuana regulations, and made the registration and checking of marijuana much easier. And so I don't think we have the kind of laws that we thought would be much more problematic. But we need to discuss that after this, the difference between medical and recreational, but this is the very reason why. And we also need to decide whether it's gonna be four in total, counting those two, or four, potentially six, yeah, so.
In my mind, the number that we're talking about, so those aren't even in the city yet, is just four, and whether they come into the city, that would mean that eventually it could be six. But that's the way, otherwise, we're just talking about maybe one. I mean, I, I think we should agree on the number, in my mind, the number was four, not including the two that aren't in our city yet.
Okay. Should we vote on that, or make an agreement on that? Just an informal vote thing?
Does everybody want? Four?
Zero.
Four. Looks like four is the number. Okay.
There's the question.
Four, so.
Include four in ten?
Four in the city of Longmont.
And if the two wanna come in?
Then, then we could.
Then it's six.
Yeah.
Then it's four total.
No.
So four total.
That's the question. That's what we just said. I know you don't agree with it. Welcome to my world.
Because we, we never know if they wanna be included or not, I mean, it's.
Mayor Coombs, I actually did hear four people say four total, so I think we do have a majority saying four total.
Four.
Oh, five, then.
Four total.
Right, total. So one thing that we could do, if the two businesses on the outskirts wanna start the annexation process, we could hold two spots, potentially, if that's something that the council wanted to do. We could craft the timing of the ordinance, the effective date, somehow, to accommodate their annexation, where we would only be going through a process for two, unless they decided during the process not to annex, then we could go ahead and open it up. I would mention that we, I have made a request to LPC to just look at those businesses from a standpoint of the cost of converting over to Longmont Power and Communications, particularly on the power side. I believe the one on Sunset has already done that, the one up north has not. So basically, they have to pay for essentially new service. They have to buy out their Excel infrastructure. We also believe we have raw water deficits on both of those, that's gonna be a hefty price tag, and there are several other kind of processes that you go through that are fees to come into the city to bring those facilities up to city standards, so I just wanna point that out.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Kind of, I've got a question, though, off this topic. Where does the, where does the inventory come from? That there's in their shops?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, I, I think we heard direction from council previously that we would not want to allow cultivation facilities within the city, so certainly, it's our understanding that for recreational marijuana, those would come from cultivation facilities located elsewhere. I think one of the pieces of correspondence that council got from one of our speakers tonight indicated some issue with that from a medical perspective, because of a requirement that a business, you know, provides some of their own marijuana, so we haven't looked into that fully. But we're under the assumption that council would not want to allow cultivation facilities, that we've only been talking about retail establishments, more the storefront. Certainly, there are other type of businesses that are currently prohibited in Longmont, including manufacturing facilities and cultivation facilities, that we have not really contemplated or asked you to provide direction on. So if that's something we need to reconsider, please let us know.
Okay, thank you. I'm of the opinion that we would want to bring in facility, or retail outlets that have a proven track record, not start with someone that's brand-new in the business. There's apparently a lot of infrastructure required behind the legal side of it, 'cause we've had directors of government affairs, I mean, this is a big deal. So we'd wanna make sure that they know how to run this business, and with all the regulations out there, in order to make sure that we get a good player here.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I can picture everybody I know either calling me a sellout, or I'm, I'm not progressive enough, listening to the people, I mean, I mean, I'm trying to be a good politician, which, which is, you see, you see what's coming, and you, you wanna get your say in, and at least have some fingerprints on it, rather than just being left out in the cold. The, so I guess I'm a four vote, unless I can get by with a three vote. So I'd, I'd be three, would be my, would be my official vote, unless somebody wanted more, Mayor, at which point, I'd go four. But the, I think, going back to your comment, Councilmember Christensen, I think that the reason, if I remember correctly, part of the reason we were saying no to medical marijuana was because medical marijuana shops can sell to kids who are 18. Or no?
Well.
And so, right, right, they can make their own rules. And so I guess my question is, is there something, Eugene, I know you're an expert in pot law, but is there something that we could do that would allow medicinal shops, but prohibit the sale to anyone under 21? Would we be allowed to do that, or is that in conflict with state regs? And I'm thinking that because I do believe one of the shops is medicinal.
My understanding is the, the dual shops that are both recreational and medicinal, they're capped at 20, you have to be 21 to go into those, so if those, if that's.
Even the medicinal ones?
Yeah.
You have to be 21?
If it's a dual shop.
If it's a dual shop?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could require medicinal, but they have to do both?
They have to do both. That's what we want.
Okay. That way, they both could come in.
Yeah.
But only if they're 21. Right.
Problem solved.
All right, hey, just trying to be a. Councilmember Christensen.
Well, actually, that's what I was going to say. We received this information from Sean Coleman, and it was very helpful. And so if council, let me just read from this. If council determines the patient access is a policy objective, meaning medical, council consider allowing but not requiring virtually separated medical retail stores. This permissive approach allows an applicant who does have the medical marijuana cultivation instru, blah, 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 blah. Anyway, the virtually separated dual-use stores, which are also called permissive, permissive dual-use, which is used in Boulder, Lyons, Lafayette, and Lewisville. And so that's what I think we should do, because that allows both of these, it solves the problem of those stores, they can either remain where they are, or they can come into the city, and it doesn't force them, should they want to be annexed, to have to get rid of medical marijuana. And so I would highly recommend we do that.
Okay.
Am I seeing consensus on that for dual? Okay.
The end result is 21.
Right.
Yeah.
With the limit of 21. Great.
Our next set of questions deals with revenue considerations. And really, the first question is something that we've talked about a little bit last year. Would, and I think this was mentioned by a council member or two, would council want to pursue a ballot question that would add a sales tax to the recreational side of this? Again, not to medical, but we're not talking about that, but to the recreational product.
When you say there already is a city sales tax, you mean an additional delta?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Finlay.
We have our city sales tax, county sales tax, and then an additional tax on marijuana.
Right.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I do think we want an additional sales tax, but I think it should be whatever Boulder's is. I believe they have an additional sales tax. I don't want them to have an addition, or maybe slightly less, so we have a bigger advantage there. And I think our licensing and operating fees should be similar to those in the county as well.
Councilmember Christensen.
Well, these are generally pretty small stores, and Boulder's, I do believe that we should have some of these, but I, first of all, would like some clarification. A couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was a month ago, we voted on accepting a marijuana impact tax, something or other. You know what I mean? And I said we should put that off, and you said it won't matter because we don't have to give it back.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, that, your recollection is correct. So that's a marijuana impact grant that cities that do not receive or have retail sales qualify for. But even if we allow it tomorrow, that grant is still in effect, because at the time it was awarded, we were a city that did not allow. So we would no longer qualify for it for that particular grant, but we would not have to give back the one that we've already received.
Okay. But that might have some effect on the people who use that for educational purposes. And I, that's, anyway, so in Boulder, they pay, each small business who runs this pays 24, $2,475 for licensing, $2,000 for operating, and then the county on top of that charges a $4,000 operating fee. Is that correct? Which would mean that they're paying $8,475 before they even get started.
Councilmember Christensen, those are separate. So there's some establishments that operate only in the county, and so that's the fee for those establishments.
So it's actually more like 4,000 for both?
Right, so the city has their licensing fee and their operating fee, and that's one.
Right, and then the county.
And then the county has something separate.
That's a lot. And part of what we don't want is for people to go say, oh, that's too much, you know, if they have that, then they obviously have to raise their prices, and then people go back to the black mark and start, yeah. I think we should have lesser fees than that, and I think we should have lesser sales tax. But it would be a good idea to have a sales tax fee.
I agree, we should have a sales tax delta. I don't think it should be as big as Boulder's, because if it's too big, then why would our two Boulder stores ever want to be annexed in? And they would have a huge advantage over us. But, you know, I'm thinking something, you know, like on, you know, 2%, 3% kind of, I don't know if we need to decide it, but I think we need something. I don't know what the right number is, but I'm seeking something like 2%.
So if council's direction is to have an additional sales tax?
Right.
Then what we will do is go and we will look at some options.
Okay.
We can bring those options back based on what it would look like, based on different percentages, and what it looks like compared to other jurisdictions.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be good.
I guess the basic question would be, is council's direction to have an additional sales tax?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement with that.
Mayor Coombs, I think you.
Councilmember Moore, I guess, is next.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Additional sales tax, yes. A couple percent, probably, somewhere in that range. And I've indicated all along, without that tax, I won't support bringing marijuana shops into Longmont, because it doesn't make any sense. So I'd like to see this ordinance tied to that sales tax passing. I'm kind of against that myself, and here's why. Because I think it should be, do the ordinance, and then, because the sales tax is a citywide thing. So you do the ordinance, and then you put this thing on the ballot. And, you know, generally, 98% of people are going to look at this thing as a sin tax, and it's going to pass anyway. But if you just put it as one combined thing, people are going to see a tax, and they're automatically going to want to vote no against it. That's my fear of wanting to combine it. That's why I think it's just two separate moves. I agree, we do want it, and I'm sure it's going to pass, and I think the citizens should vote for it, but I don't think it should be combined as one ball of wax.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think, now, this might seem counterproductive, and it might seem very, you know, that's great, let's get some extra money into our coffers. But the reason why we don't have companies pushing more quickly for renewable energy is because we tax our oil products. The reason why we don't have people truly standing up and saying, no, big tobacco, you're killing people, we're putting you out of business, is because we have tobacco tax. Same thing with alcohol. When you have a sin tax, or when you tax vices, and if you say, well, marijuana's not a vice, well, why are we taxing people's medicine? You know? So you're, if we tax the marijuana that comes into the town.
We're not taxing the medical.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if we tax marijuana, you're putting yourself in a position where in the future you are less likely to make a change, should we discover that we should make a change. And right now, say what you want about marijuana, we don't know very much. Meaning, you can argue both sides, the morality of it and what you want to do personally, but right now, it's kind of the Wild West, as far as research goes, as far as legality goes. You look up, you know, health effects on marijuana, I mean, you've got everybody and their brother giving an opinion. So I just think that if we start, let's start, we get 300, 400, 500,000, and all of a sudden we're like, hey, Councilmember Bagley, that's paying for the ice rink and swimming pool. Do you want to get rid of the pot? I'd be like, heck, no, pot's great, right? And so I guess, I guess if we start down the road of taxing those who potentially are the most vulnerable of our, of our community, and I could give anecdotal evidence all day long. I had two 18-year-olds in my office today who were charged with criminal conduct where marijuana was involved. And so, I mean, I joke every day that I will always have a very good income, as long as there are, you know, pot, alcohol, and drugs, and families, and holidays. You know, holidays are a big one, too. But I think that if we're going to allow it in, on principle, allow it in, and then that way, we see what happens. But I think that if we get addicted to the cash flow, you know, literally, we're putting a financial needle in our arm, and away we go.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think we should have an annual operating fee. There were, in the council communications, there were several different fees. The $2,500 a year seemed, seemed like a good one. And I do understand your reasoning, Councilman Bagley, but I am going to say I think we should have a sales tax on recreational marijuana.
I didn't expect them with that.
Councilmember Christensen.
I see the reasoning of both Councilman Moore and Councilman Bagley, and I agree in some ways. I don't think, though, that we can make this dependent upon a sales tax passing, because that puts these businesses in complete, they'd have no idea what to do until a sales tax may or may not pass. I don't think that's fair to do. And it sort of tangles it up. I think we should just move forward with this, and I do think we should have a sales tax, but I think that's a separate issue.
We don't decide the sales tax, the people of Longmont would decide it, you have to go to a vote.
We'll flip the rate.
Yeah, we can decide the rate, but.
So Mayor Coombs, the consensus that I'm hearing around is yes to an additional tax, and that tax would be somewhere in the range of 2% to 3%. I believe Boulder is 3.5, so we would definitely stay under that, so in that 2% to 3% range. We'll, as Harold said, bring you some options on that. A licensing fee, similar to what the county and other jurisdictions in the county are charging, again, maybe looking at considering something slightly lower. The $2,500, $2,000 range was thrown out. And then are not in favor, with the exception of Bagley and Moore, of tying the pass, the adoption of lifting the ban to an additional tax. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll join Justin Pat.
Okay, so Santos and Moore on that. And then other thoughts on that?
Well, it kind of looks like the majority of us don't want to tie the two together. We do one, and then the other.
And then we have one additional on the public involvement.
I think when we had talked with council previously, there had been some conversation around additional information that's needed, and we just wanted a little bit of additional direction on this. We've shared with you tonight that we obviously have the results from the Customer Satisfaction Survey, and I know you've all seen those. We've also have the results from the Downtown Survey, which is a smaller subset, obviously, as Sean mentioned, of business owners and property owners in the downtown. So what additional information does council need, and how might we go about collecting that? I think we've had definitely some interest from the industry about conducting some stakeholder focus groups or interviews, and would think that that might make sense. We've also had some conversations with Boulder County Public Health, who has worked with a lot of jurisdictions in the county, and they've offered to provide some assistance to staff. You know, what else would council like to see in the way of input? You know, we're kind of struggling with what additional questions do we ask the community, because we have asked them several questions, not only recently in the Customer Satisfaction Survey, but also when we've tackled this topic before. So looking for some specific direction on what council would like to see to help you in your decision-making process.
Councilmember Christensen.
Okay, so we have the opportunity for people to come to City Council every week, and they do, and that's good. And I'm sure that they will, people on both sides will continue to come. That's a great thing. We've had a forum that was several hours long with a lot of work by you guys to have a very good marijuana forum on all the issues we've been talking about. We've had the, this, the Longmont Downtown Development Survey, we've had the Community Satisfaction Survey, and, and we're going to have several more hearings after we get this. So I actually think we have plenty of community input, and I don't really think that we need to ask more stuff, because I think we'll continue to hear from the community here and in letters and in all kinds of ways. What do you mean by stakeholder? I'm always mystified by who defines what the stakeholder is.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, that's a great question. What, the only group that has approached us to date with regard to having some sort of a stakeholder group are industry people. What we heard in previous conversations tonight was that we want to focus that on folks that are in Boulder County. So that certainly narrows that kind of potential group of people that we could invite to participate and kind of walk through us on potential pitfalls they might see to an ordinance as we crafted it. However, I did talk to the mayor a few weeks ago about the fact that there will be people that are opposed to this, who might also want to be consulted, and how we might go, I mean, in order to be fair, we could, you know, have a stakeholder group of folks that have spoken in the past against this, such as the gentleman tonight, that we could invite to, you know, participate in something to, again, review the ordinance as it's coming back to you.
Sure. I think that's a good idea. I really do think, then, if you, what you mean by stakeholder is the people involved in this industry, the businesses and the various people involved in this industry, because we really, they only get three minutes to talk, and that's not much. And they're the ones who actually can tell, can tell us what they do to, you know, what the regulate, the state regulations are, what is involved, what they foresee, as you said, about pitfalls and things like that. So I do think that that is the one group we really haven't had much time hearing from, and that would be a good idea. But it is also important to have people who are very much against this still have a voice, other than just City Council.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think, I mean, if we're going to do it, let's make sure that we confront the brutal facts and understand exactly what it is we're doing. And I think that the stakeholders that we should talk to, it's not just industry people, because industry people want to sell pot. I think that what we should do is we should hear from our local, you know, there are people that I work with on a daily basis who are drug and alcohol therapists, that when someone is using pot under the age of 21, or when they commit a crime or DUI, where they've been using alcohol or pot or another drug, they've got to go to a therapist and understand where their substance abuse is coming from. Being able to hear from those members of our community who see this on a daily basis, I think, would be helpful. I also think that the Longmont area realtors, you know, how is this going to, I mean, if we're going to be talking about where we're going to put it, I think getting their input would be beneficial. I also think that the industry stakeholders that we should talk to are the current Boulder County pot shop neighbors, as well as those individuals who owned pot shops here before, because part of me in the back of my mind just kind of cringes. I do know that one of them, after he lost his store, was recently arrested after, you know, armed robbery of other pot shops as a result of losing his livelihood. So things this city has done in the past on this issue have consequences to family and individuals. And before we take action, just go in with our eyes wide open. That's all I'm saying. That doesn't hurt anything. So I think that we should have those targeted participants, but also, just like with oil and gas, you know, invite other members of the community to come and express their opinion, and have a drop-down, drop-down, throw-down, like we always do with City Council topics, and make a decision like big boys and big girls, and move on.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just to piggyback on what Councilman Bagley said, I think we should also, in the stakeholders, I think that the high school and middle school counselors are stakeholders, and we would like to know how this is actually affecting our community now, without any kind of retail. So I would like you to add that to the menu.
That was a great idea. I wish I'd listened.
So if. So if, if we could just get a little bit of clarification, um, we understand that there's, um, questions to ask regarding youth drug use and that there's additional data to be collected, but we're not necessarily sure what questions we're asking, um, folks about if we allow retail marijuana establishments in the city. What, I, I guess there's a difference of if we're asking them, do you support or not support allowing establishments within the city? Or if we're asking them, do you support it in commercial zoning districts? Do you support it, do you support medical and recreational? Do you support licensing fees? And so we were kind of under the impression that it was the latter, but as we get more broad in the groups, it begins to sound maybe like we're asking folks more on kind of the customer satisfaction survey question, do you support it or not? And so we need clarification on that. Because I think in some ways, if we want to have the knock-down drag-out, we can, um, but we're not sure...
We don't need to. I'm not saying we have to.
We, we just want to make sure we're asking the right questions.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor. You can go ahead, Mayor. I could tell in your mind that you're like, do I speak or, you're polite. Do you want to say something?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time with kind of what Aaron's thinking, you know, to bring this back. Uh, I mean, obviously, we don't have pot shops now, and kids are still using marijuana. Now, we, we do have pot shops where you've got to go through two levels of 21-year-old ID, so I don't see how that really has, I guess I'm missing the connection on how that is affecting these junior high school age kid. I'm not seeing the connection there and why that's relevant to whether or not we're going to have that on our ordinance, and because it's not likely to have medical marijuana for 18-year-olds and, and as long as we have extreme, you know, well, never going to solve the problem of people now, right now, that want, that are 21, 25, whatever, that want to go out in the county and buy marijuana and want to distribute to kids. We can't stop that, whether we have pot shops or not. So I don't see the relevance of, of that myself. I mean, I'm missing something, but maybe I'm just not as smart as you are, Brian.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I take it back. Don't talk. Let me talk. The, uh, I guess the, uh, again, without, I'd get disbarred, but I can give you literally dozens and dozens of examples of how kids in their home, drugs get delivered by 21, 22-year-olds. Um, the, uh, and so I guess all I'm saying is that what I would suggest, Aaron, is what we do is ask them the questions that you're just asking us. Get someone, I mean, as much as you are, you are smarter than me in a lot of areas, Mayor, but I think that we're not experts in this area. I'm not saying we start from scratch. I just would like school counselors, addiction, substance abuse experts, um, the, uh, industry shops, both those in current existence and those that the city booted out of town. Um, I would like to hear their answers to the questions you're asking tonight. How many shops? Uh, what, what is the impact of those shops? What should the taxes be? Where should they be located? How do we do the locations? What's the impact, again, and most importantly, what will the impact be on our city? And just hear what they have to say. We don't have to, uh, do what they say. I'd just be curious to hear, um, what they think will happen, given their expertise. That's it.
So, so one of the things that we've just, uh, we're rolling out a new online engagement tool that'll allow us to do some of that, and, um, we're doing it right now, I believe, on the code adoption or some of the work we're doing on codes. So that could be one of the tools that we do to, to push those questions out and, and tap into specific communities, and then we could be more direct and email specific groups to say, would you please respond to this? And, and it aggregates it, and it's a, it's sort of a streaming conversation.
That'd be great.
So it sounds like we'll, we can also develop a survey that we can promote through that new tool, targeting the groups you've mentioned, kind of in the three subject areas that we've discussed with you tonight. We can craft those questions, get that out, um, and then we'll, we'll target descrip, uh, distribution to the groups that you all have mentioned, but also, obviously, we'd make it available to the broader community, and then we can aggregate those results. And, um, depending on what we find, um, come back and see if we need additional outreach. Uh, maybe in the meantime, talk with some of those stakeholders that are interested in providing information, um, like some of the industry reps, as well as Boulder County Public Health, and then just go from there. Does that seem reasonable?
Yep.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I just don't want us to start all over again. We've already decided, uh, a number of things here tonight. We've decided how many, the number, the location, recreational and medical, and I, I don't...
We haven't decided to bring it back. We haven't decided, we're just...
Yes, we're going to bring it back, but we, we have come to some consensus on a lot of these things. I don't think we need to ask them, ask everybody in the community all over again how many we should have and, you know, all that stuff. I, I do think that the stakeholder interviews are probably the most important things because they have not frankly been, uh, heard from, and, uh, so...
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Maybe what we do is, maybe to address Councilmember Christensen's concern, just take what we've agreed to tonight, or the consensus that we've, we've come to tonight, and then ask the experts what you think and get their impact, get, get their feedback on the direction council seems to be headed.
Can I get council to kind of nod or disagree with that? Basically saying, here's what, um, the, the direction the city is moving, what are your thoughts on that direction? As opposed to rehashing...
Right. Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Harold, did you want to say something?
Not yet. I'm waiting, waiting on these two. Is that it? Or, so, wanted to make sure they had all their questions. So the one thing that was brought out earlier was, um, some type of ordinance for those folks that deal with, that, that, I guess, that are over 21, that sell to minors. In our conversations, and I'll let Eugene jump in, it's not something that we can criminalize, but there could be a financial penalty associated with it.
Can't we do six months? I thought we could do six months. We never do it, but we can do 180 days.
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney. Uh, you know, I haven't looked at that aspect of the law. I'm waiting to hear kind of generally what direction we got from council and then go do legal review. So I think that should be one of the issues we, we do further legal review on. Just give you a heads up on that.
So before we move forward with that piece, we heard it, but we didn't necessarily see if there was consensus. Is that something that council wants us to look at?
Well, yeah. I kind, I kind of think that there should be stiff penalties for people that buy marijuana from the shop legally and sell it to underage kids that, I mean, some sort of fine or seems... But isn't it...
At the district level, but at the county level.
I think I'll let, I think it's best if Eugene researches it and gets back to us, then us making the decision tonight.
Not what I'm seeing from count yet.
Yeah.
Councilmember Christensen?
Don't we have, um, the same sort of penalties for people who distribute alcohol? We have penalties for people who distribute alcohol to people under 21. Why not make them the same? But we, I, you know, whatever those are.
Councilmember Peck?
Actually, that's what I was going to suggest, so I, I second that. To just mirror the alcohol penalty.
Don't see any other additional questions?
Good luck.
Good luck. So now it's time for comments from council members. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to remind everyone that tomorrow night, Wednesday, April 19th, at 5:00 at the Plaza Convention Center, is the Longmont Aerospace Symposium. Um, as, as hopefully most of you know, Intersys, uh, which is a company here that we were able to keep in Longmont, um, uh, builds lithium batteries. And those lithium batteries will be on the next, uh, SLS Orion rocket that hopefully will get us to Mars here real soon. So, you know, the road to, to Mars actually goes through Longmont. Without those batteries, they're not going anywhere. So NASA, Lockheed, Orbital AKT, Boeing, and other, um, uh, bigwigs from, um, the aerospace industry will be in Longmont tomorrow, again, 5:00 to 7:30 at the Plaza Convention Center. We've all been invited and hope to see a, a good council contingent out there, staff as well, to hear about, uh, how Orion will lift off using batteries here from Longmont.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, it's, I think that's a terrific coup that we have that aerospace symposium, because the whole county, and especially Longmont, has a lot of aerospace going on, and people don't really know about it. So it's a wonderful thing that the, that we're having this symposium, which I probably won't be able to get to, but anyway. Um, I would like to, um, challenge, uh, city council, and especially the women on city council, although Bonnie is excused because she has unbendable knees, or, they work good. Okay. Habitat for Humanity is, um, having Women Build Day from May 10th to May 13th. So if you really believe in affordable housing, uh, come build. It's not restricted to women. But I think that the whole city council should participate in a couple of Habitat builds. That would be, um, a chance to put our muscles where our mouth is, so. Get ahold of me, and I will arrange it with Rebecca Shannon.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just have one other question about the marijuana ordinance. When do you think that will come back to council? I know it's hard to know, but do you have an estimate of the timeline?
Mayor Coombs, uh, Councilmember Finley, the good news is that I think that we can start this stakeholder process very quickly. And, um, in the meantime, perhaps between planning and the city attorney's office, we can start crafting, you know, the, the ordinance template. And, um, so, you know, I think that that stakeholder process, we should, in my opinion, at least take two months, perhaps, to make sure that we've been able to meet with the different stakeholder groups that you mentioned. And then I think we'd probably be ready by that point to bring it back. Does that sound reasonable?
Okay, and I, I would just want to make sure that it comes back in time for us to get a sales text on the ballot.
Yeah, we're going to have to talk about the timing on that piece. We may have to shrink the stakeholder piece in order to, to hit those timelines, so that will be part of our conversation is the timing. Let us work on that.
The other thing I want to mention is the Ed Green Scholarship Dinner for Sister Cities is this Friday down at Xylane's. Uh, it's a lot of fun. If you haven't gone, the food's good, but tamales, homemade tamales, delicious, and it's very reasonable. They have a great silent auction that's, uh, also a lot of fun, and I think that all council members should come to the Ed Green Scholarship Dinner on Friday, April 21st.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just want to extend an invitation to the community. CDOT is doing a, planning an environmental linkage study, and there'll be a, uh, open house, um, I'm trying to find it here.
I'll drive you to get your pot. There's not enough stores.
On April 26th, Longspreek Middle School, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM. And that's, they're studying the 66 corridor from Lyons to Firestone, and, um, they'll have some information for us, and, um, it's, uh, open house format, so you can come, come and go as you want, so. Part of our transportation infrastructure.
Councilmember Christensen?
One more thing I forgot to mention. Longmont, uh, Front Range Film Festival in Longmont is happening this week, from the 20th to the 23rd. And, uh, so this is the, uh, it would be great to see people out there, too. I think it'll be fun.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. There was a letter sent to council from the Airport Advisory Board asking us to amend their duties. Does staff have any thoughts on this? It sounds like they want to advise planning and zoning when their job is actually to advise city council.
So, I mean, that's an item that we can bring back for council discussion?
Okay.
Is that what we're...
I don't think it's necessary. I mean, they're, all advisory boards, their job is to advise city council, the seven members of council, not to advise other boards and commissions. That's my take on it, and that's what I've always told every board and commission that I've ever served on, is that, you know, you're, you serve at the pleasure of council, your job is to advise council on your particular area. Um, I, I think this is an overreach by the AAB. So, um, I'm just wondering if staff had any, had seen the letter and had any thoughts?
We have seen the letter. Um, I know that there's a lot of thoughts when, from the planning department. I know that legal's been involved in some of the communication. If it's something that council wants, we can put it on the agenda, and we can present that information.
Again, I don't think it's necessary unless we want to bring the advisory board into council to have this discussion, which might be a possibility. But, uh, again, I, as other boards and commissions have always tried to influence other boards and commissions, their job is to advise council, not to advise other boards and commissions.
Councilmember Peck?
Um, just, I, I didn't know that Councilman Santos was going to make that, uh, motion. I personally don't think we need to. It was an emotion suggestion. Um, I don't, I personally don't think we need to bring that back. But I do want to, uh, let you know that Youth of the Earth Day is this Saturday at the Longmont Museum, and it's always been a sold-out event, tons of booths for, um, adults and children, music, food, fun.
Councilmember Christensen?
Um, well, I do think it would be worthwhile having a discussion, but I would, what I would suggest that they, about the, um, airport thing, uh, so that we got to hear from the airport board and the planning and zoning board. But I, what I would suggest they do is actually meet periodically with each other, like many other boards do, so that they're aware of what they're doing and so that they're aware of each other's, um, take on things. But Councilman Santos is correct, of course, that they, their job is to advise council. However, it, they do have a point in that they want to know what's, uh, being built in the, uh, airport influence zone. So I, I think it's, um, worth having them meet here, or at least meet somewhere, so they can talk to each other. Thank you.
I'm going to put in a plug for Summit Tacos. They make these tacos that are like CDOT gusma. So if you ever go to, um, the, the new Sidery on Saturday afternoon, the Summit Taco truck comes there. So excellent, excellent tacos.
All right, city manager, any comments?
Sean has a quick announcement.
I just wanted to announce, Mayor Coombs, that we are having in, in association with Foothills United Way and the Longmont Youth Center, a book drive. Um, the books will be collected. There's a box right up here at the mall where the food drive is, and I know you guys aren't competing against the youth council on this, but we'd love to have any used books from your kids, grandkids, that you may have for that. And those will be distributed, um, to households as well as offices and, and places where kids frequent, um, to promote early childhood education.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.